They might look rendered with the, the, uh, the brand identity on it. Again, simple replacement of panels to have those gateways, you know, not take them down, just use the pylons and, and replace the design. We also wanted to look at how does the brand identi- uh, expand into things like events and activities, whether they're civic events, whether one of these things that we want to do in a brand system is we want partners to buy into this. So we know this is a church-sponsored event. Well, in a good brand, it'd be great if, hey, I want to use your amber. I want to use your blue. I want to use that typeface. Hey, that reinforces the community identity. Why would we not let someone who's putting on an event ha- take advantage of the color system and the typeface system and so forth? And so this also goes to organizational partners as well. And the Pullman Chamber of Commerce is a critical partner. Here, what we did with the brand is, um, we really wanted to incorporate a little bit more of that nod to the, the regional economy and, and, and so we do have our wheat in here. It's not delicate. It's a little more emphatic, but we felt like that was important for a business organization and that many companies here in Pullman relate to the agriculture that's happening in Whitman County and in the Palouse region and, and throughout. And so to have that relationship where we still kind of have a nod to the railroad, we still have the same color system, but we have a little bit more of a shield, we have a little bit more of a, a structure here for the chamber, and then we have that broader nod, um, to, um, to the overall community. And then again, there are things that happen where, you know, the farmer's market design is fantastic. Why would we suggest changing it? The only change that you see on this is the typeface. So, I mean, it could just keep on going and not change anything at all except for the typeface when it's time to make a new sign or, you know, or just let it keep going. So it, it's an evolution in some cases and not a revolution. Uh, and we think that's important because we want to honor the work that's been done uh, in the community as well. And then at the end of the day, part of what this kind of circles all the way back to is our original purpose is not just to create a unified brand system for the city and its partners, but to have a broader marketing message to attract tourists, to retain tourists, to get repeat visitors, to work with economic development. And so this is where the tagline kind of helps build out. And so this idea of the tagline of, and we've been through several different tagline iterations, but let our history pull you in, let our nature pull you in, our downtown, family, innovation, connections, let our community pull you in. And we see almost limitless opportunities to have this expanded in branding and marketing for destinations like restaurants in downtown or throughout Pullman, uh, for events and activities that happen throughout the year, to reflecting on the past and the history of the community. Again, just a turn of a couple of words kind of cleans up some things that we, you know, went through in discussion. Uh, our vision will pull you in. Um, part of this is your aspirations and your goals with your downtown plan. One of the things that we did deliberately is to create a badge on this particular ad, and there's two badges, a horizontal and a vertical, just so that the toolbox has different tools that you all can pull out, um, so that it's kind of locked up in one piece. This is the second horizontal ba- uh, ba- badge. The nature will pull you in. Our art will pull you in. Again, different design concepts that can be used with partners to incorporate this in. And then certainly, you know, we can't neglect the important National Lentle Festival that happens here. Um, we did not say our lentils will pull you in, um, but we'll let the festival designers figure out how to, uh, take advantage of that. And then if, before it's all over, what we want folks doing in Pullman is if you're not necessarily a Washington State person, you know, you maybe you've come here from somewhere else and you want to walk around town and be proud of the place you live, then maybe you would don a T-shirt or a hat that has the community logo on it, or you might even walk around with a hydro flask, which, you know, the popular water bottles these days that have the brand on it. And, and, and this is a really fascinating way to have the identity of the community work its way into various partners overall. So with that, um, our next steps, we have an implementation workshop tomorrow with the partners. I think we're expecting about 25, um, uh, where we'll go through this presentation, but we'll also go through kind of the weeds of the detailed brand style guide, which is the rulebook, uh, the file system, how the file system works. For everything you've seen, there are five different versions of it. For every color you've seen, we're doing all the colors. We're not doing Pantone anymore. Pantone kind of changed their business model, but that's getting in the nerd section. The typefaces are in there. We'll talk through Q and A that the partners may have. We're going to continue to do revisions and additions, um, because we, this is an iterative process and it's one that we like to have that continued, you know, input and circle loop where we're, we're improving where we can. And then ultimately build out all the deliverables and the style guide. And one of the things about the deliverables and the style guide is they live kind of in the cloud. Certainly we recommend you download them locally, but not a week goes by, we've been around for 22 years as a firm, and it's so nice now that when someone loses a file or something gets corrupt, we've got it safe and secure and we'll get a call and say, oh, we need the link. Well, we'll send out the link and everything, or if somebody needs something new. So with that, um, I would be pleased to answer any questions you have, and it's been a real pleasure to work with you all so far on this, uh, important project, implementing the tourism strategic plan from place in Maine and doing the branding for, uh, with you.
Thank you, Trip. I think we've got a few, a few comments coming here. Anne, did I see your hand?
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much for this wonderful, comprehensive, um, look at our community and representation of so many different parts of it. It's really, really something. Um, I, I love the part of the mission statement that talks about, we love, we endeavor to welcome people from all places and that our community maintains its feeling of warmth while remaining forever young. And always living in a college town my whole adult life, I always tell people, it's so wonderful because it does, it has a youthful flavor and it does keep us all young and helps us not get set in our perspectives. And I, and I love that about our community. Um, I love that you did the blue monograph, uh, monochrome, which could be used, for example, by our Pullman School District, whose colors are blue and white. So thank you for that. Um, I had a question about the changes when you were on the change screen, the different iterations and fine tuning. If it, if, if the logo, if we choose one of those or some combination of it, does that carry through to every logo across all the entities? So it would change.
It's a great question. I think the, the changes are subtle enough that unless we're changing line weight, we would have to go back in and change line weight within any other, um, built-out, I would think, like the Aqua Aquatic Center. We'd want to make sure that we're not using an inconsistent line weight.
Right.
Or the chamber, let's say we change the line weight. The chamber logo, we'd want to have the similar line weight.
Okay.
Um, a lot, some of these others, we like the number of rays or some of the curvature, uh, you know, versus the, the more smooth edges would not necessarily warrant that, but we would definitely review the other pieces to make sure that we're not sending a yin and a yang, you know, on those.
Great. And just a couple more things. Um, thank you so much about talking about the individual entities such as the library. Um, I'm on the board there and there was concern that that logo would be changed and the board and the director are very happy that not only does it look very similar to the work that's already been done, and thank you for recognizing that, but also I re- I love that you, um, said that you have flexibility and you say, you know, you can, you can do this this way or do it that way. And so thank you so much for that. Um, and I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Megan?
So Trip, I just want to thank you for the process and the presentation. I did serve on the work group. Um, a couple of things that I just want to point out that I think were, um, really well-done and exceptional in terms of expressing what makes us different. And one of those is our four hills. So I was very excited that we're, um, recognizing that and branding, if you will, each of the, the four hills and, um, their distinctive marks. So that was something that really stood out to me. And, um, just to reiterate what, uh, Councilmember Park said as far as, uh, working with our partners and, uh, letting them incorporate the elements of the brand that make sense to them, but recognizing that what's going to happen is we'll have that consistency in the consumer's mind, um, some more obvious than others, but if we could look to our partners for that support, I think that's going to go a long ways down the road. And then finally, the, just the legs that I think exist with the whole story around, you know, what pulls you in or let us, you know, let the beauty of the Palouse pull you in. I just has, I, I just believe it's going to really work for us long-term in terms of storytelling and testimonials, et cetera. So, um, yeah, those, those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Councilmember. We actually did envision the idea of having testimonials from people on what pulled them in.
Exactly.
Becky?
Uh, everything, everyone's already said, especially about the what pulls you in. I wasn't so crazy about the first tagline, but this is so subtle and stirring and I love it. I love this, this whole presentation. I love this, the, the more informal, uh, look here. I think it's, I think it's very modern. I think it's a, as Councilmember Parks was saying, you know, young. I think it really appeals to that. And I love the ability to go back and forth between the two two. I, I'm just so impressed. I think this is such a great package overall, and I just wanted to let you know that, that I'm really impressed. Thank you so much for all your work.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Nathan, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so there's already been a lot of, um, uh, congratulations and good job and so on and so forth. And, um, I know when we met, there were some concerns about, uh, I think somebody explained it, uh, pretty aptly, and this is not trying to put a wet blanket on the whole thing. It kind of looks like a merit badge. And when I look at it, um, I think there's been a lot of great work done on it. For me, I, I see a lot more blue skies, um, personally. Um, I wasn't on the committee. I, I did give some feedback regarding this. Um, and it kind of stayed the same, which is the decision of the committee. I think the, the other questions I had is, so you're not keeping the, um, what pulls you, right? Okay, yeah, because I was just gonna, uh, say that that has some urban slang. That's, uh, not, not real good. The other thing is when the first part of the position statement, and this is something, um, we had talked about, uh, there's mention of, of indelible imprint. Um, and I know this is very minute, um, but both indelible and imprint mean basically the same thing. And so I'm not sure if you want to keep that. Um, and I had to make sure, so I was making sure with looking it up with the dictionary. Uh, and, and so just to, just to point that out, and again, I know I'm feeling like I'm kind of, you know, tearing at this, but honestly, I've sat with it for a while. I like it. I, uh, I think there are some things that, um, when I first came in, I'd, uh, you know, for me, the, the clock tower is iconic and that was something we were getting rid of. So perhaps it was something I needed to get rid of my ego about and kind of step back on it. Um, I liked when you explained it. I'm, I'm a guy for Easter eggs. I love that. Um, and so being able to see, oh yes, the four hills, uh, three forks, so on and so forth. And right now, and I'm trying to get rid of it in my brain, the, the, um, rays kind of remind me of a, especially with the orange, a slice of an orange. So I'm really trying to get rid of that in my brain. But I think this is very impressive. I don't know if, if yellow on the side of our blue building necessarily jives with what I would, well, it's a gold, you know, kind of a gold stock, jives with my thoughts, maybe a green, but, um, you know, I, thanks for all your hard work. And it's definitely a nod to, I think it was Barney Waldrop that came up with the high-tech, higher education, highest quality of living. So that's a good, you know, that was many, many years ago, and so I'm sure he'd be really happy to see that. And having been on the, uh, logo design team with Cheryl May and Jessica for Neil Public Library, it's, I'm glad that you're keeping that. So thank you.
Thank you for your feedback and always, as an English major, I didn't go to Clemson. I'm from the South, so, um, I am prone to put two words next to one another that mean the exact same thing. We can make those modifications. I shaved a lot of words off of that brand statement. I'm ready to shave a few more, so.
Francis, did you have a comment?
Please. Uh, Anne, Anne, you have been, uh, responsive as, as, as we've talked about things. It's, it's definitely, uh, Trip has, has brought his, his experience to this, but he's been very open when we say, no, this is, this is Pullman and this is what we need to change. So thank you very much for this presentation. I, I appreciate, uh, also that you have the different styles and, and I, we understand this is still a, a, a process that's, that's, that's going on. I'm excited about where things are at, uh, in this, in this process. And, and really it's, it's right to be bringing it before the council now as opposed to trying to get it all the way finalized. I mean, it's, it's, it's difficult in, in this type of process to get everything finalized before, but we bring it out, let, let our community see it as, as we continue to work to refine. I'm very interested in, uh, the input that you get, uh, tomorrow from, from our community and also from, uh, um, our departments should be there with staff, uh, to be able to get that feedback too, uh, as related, because this is something that really is going, going forward in, uh, in this way. I believe that with this presentation, kind of similar to with the strategic tourism, this is something that as a council, it's not that we vote to approve, but it's an acceptance, um, whether it's a, I don't know if it's a head nod or if it's a vote that, that we need to do as, as, as a part of receiving this, this branding in order to continue to move forward.
Well, Eileen, did you have some input?
I, I do. And now that Trip has reminded me that he's an English major, he's really in trouble now. Um, in terms of the statement, um, I don't like the word nestled. It's, uh, overused, common. It just, yeah, sounds kind of 19th century and it's overused. I don't like the word allure for the same reasons. Those, there, we can find some substitutes for that. The rest of it, I'm, I'm okay with. In terms of the actual graphic elements, I like them a lot. What I would maybe change would be the, I'll, I have examples and I will show them to you rather than taking up council's time and, and going through all of that. So I do have, I do have something to show you and I'll share that with you after the meeting and, uh, yeah. So, but all in all, I think the, the totality of the, of the, of the experience for the community has been really great. And, um, yeah, having all of those elements together with all the partners and all that is gonna, it's gonna get us where we need to be on this tying in with the hard work from the tourism folks and the branding and because this, this consistency is something that we've been seeking for some while, and especially within the departments too. The word, again, an overused word, siloed, came up many times about how different departments were kind of headed off in their own direction and that we needed a little more consistency. So, yep, let's keep at it. Looking good so far.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
I just have one last comment.
Pat, can you wind us up here?
Um, I think the, the main thing that was absolutely remarkable about this whole process is that after a two-day period of time, Trip and his partner Sean, working with different groups of individuals from the community, um, including councilmembers, staff, Pullman staff people, uh, members of the community and different, um, activities, and then a, a final meeting, which was kind of a catch-all for anyone that wasn't able to get to the individual meetings, um, getting input from people, and they were very active. I think you got a lot of input there. And then just driving around town, as you did, and 18 hours later, came up with the core of this concept, which is just absolutely astounding to me and certainly reflects your expertise and your familiarity with your subjects and your subject matter. And I think, you know, gosh, it's just absolutely amazing. When we saw the first presentation, we were just blown away. We couldn't believe that that was the product of 18, I'm sure, very tense and difficult hours for both of you, but it was just pure magic when we saw it the first time. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. I won't speak to the arguments that we had late at night.
All right. Thanks, Trip. And that's, okay, we're good. So moving on to our next presentation this evening, a lot of, a lot of stuff tonight. Um, let's see, we have Mike Urban up with our update on Pullman City Goals and Priorities.
Stalling to see if my PowerPoint gets switched over automatically, but it isn't. We're home. Outstanding. Well, thank you, Mayor Protem, and good evening, council. Before you tonight is an update on the adopted goals and priorities. I'm gonna go through the pieces, um, kind of one by one and won't pause real long. So if there's a question or a comment that you want to add, just please kind of blurt in because I'm going to be going back and forth on my eye contact between my notes and you. So what's going on here? Just a quick, uh, update on the timeline and what happened. Uh, February 5th of 2022, City Council held a retreat. And then on March 22nd, the first, uh, goal-setting work session occurred. And the second goal-setting work session followed up on April 19th. At the May 3rd meeting, the final 2022-23 goals and priorities document was adopted by the City Council, and staff and I went to work on all the items that are in here. And one of the things that came up during the goals discussion is quarterly updates. So City Council received, uh, the 2022 second quarter goals from me on the 12th of July, and then the third quarter goals on the 28th of October via memos. One of the other pieces that the council had set as part of a goal and priority is that the fourth quarter wrap-up, um, goal presentation would be in-person at City Council, and that's my purpose here tonight, um, giving you the fourth quarter update and hopefully setting the table on a bunch of things going into the first quarter of 2023. So going down the goals as they were presented, the first item, uh, was downtown, and the first item on the downtown was find ways to assist and aid businesses during the 2023 downtown improvements construction. So the Community Development Department is planning to host on the 2nd of March, a downtown businesses, uh, question and answer period regarding improvements that they may want to do on their own during, um, this. So how, how can they get through the process of planning and all of those items? So that'll be advertised very heavily through the month of February. Staff's also discussing the parking options downtown, um, and be able to bring that to City Council for discussion and further guidance in March as well. We know that's a huge concern for not only City Council, but the community as a whole. So now that the, um, steering committee has held their last meeting, um, staff's gonna get together and talk about the different options that are out there and that we can bring back to you. And as we continue on, we'll be reviewing other needs and assessments as the timeline for the project is finalized from Welch Comer and the project goes out to bid.
Mike, can I ask you a question on the, on the parking with the update that we're getting? One of the things that I'm also hearing is a, a question of whether or not as a part of that will be a discussion around the reset of parking fines. Right now, we have a tiered parking fine system that goes to a max and then there's never a reset, so once you hit that top, you, you stay there forever. And, and I think there's, there's been some discussions, but I'm not sure if it, it'd be nice to know whether or not a reset is an option, uh, for our community members so that they don't, they're not at a hundred-dollar fine for, forever, once, once they hit that.
Sure.
And I don't know if that's, if that's, if this is the right place for it, but I was just seeing that in there, Mike.
Sure. I've been discussing this with the police chief offline outside of this because we, we feel that we're going a different direction with the parking, um, during the summer as far as what will be enforced and what won't. So, but this is a discussion I'm having with, uh, Chief Opken North about those resets and he's got a few ideas. Okay. Okay. Uh, second item was establish a name and brand for the improvement plan, and this, uh, occurred. We've been using Project Downtown, uh, since, uh, May of 2022. Cleanup public spaces and fixtures and implement weed management. This is going to be an ongoing item that will never be completed because those weeds keep coming back every spring. But as we go into this spring, preparations, uh, for deployment are ongoing on weed control. Everybody's making sure they get their certifications in line so we can get out there and do some spray work. There's more equipment being purchased so we can attend to it. And then just responding to notifications to clean up when they're received. And then we will respond to the downtown non-construction areas during the construction period as well. Next piece still on downtown, research and discuss the implementation of a downtown business district. So I've been working with staff on this a little bit, and originally when this was first brought to us, we believed it was generated through some discussion around maps and how our map may look some, different than somebody else's. So we're actually requesting tonight a little additional direction and guidance from the City Council, um, as to what they would like to see as far as a downtown business district separate of the C2 zone that already exists down there and going into the construction. So, um, we're ready to work on this. I just, we're, we're kind of struggling with what the true direction on this item is.
Francis?
I, I can, I can start on it. I know two different things that were, that have been discussed. One is the alignment of the maps. Uh, if we look at, uh, the map that is used for the, for the downtown association is a different map than what we have for the downtown, and it'd really be nice to align those. I know that, uh, in their map, uh, the depot is part of it, as is the chamber, but it, but in the city's map, it's not. So that, so a consistent alignment in that way. I, I think that the second piece that I, I think where we've had some of the confusion was, I, I think the, the, it was originally thought as an overlay to where as, with an overlay, you could then, uh, do unique zoning as a part of the overlay, but the fact that the C2 is only in the downtown, it, it's kind of redundancy. There's, they're not necessarily need for an overlay because our C2 zone only fits the downtown, so you could do, you don't have to necessarily do both, is, is my thought. And I don't know if, uh, so that, if, if that's the direction that you're interested in.
So to clarify, you want us to change the C2 zone to match the map of the downtown association?
Go ahead, Francis.
From the discussions that I've heard, we talked about that. I know that there's some buildings that, uh, recently were in the C2 that moved out, um, where, um, the old, the restaurant used to be, um, now I'm gonna, I'm-
Oh, the, the-
At, at the corner of Paradise and, um, the first street off of, off- At the corner of Paradise and the first street off of, off of Grand. Sorry, I'm, I'm spacing on names. Those buildings there used to be in the C2, have been moved out. So, it's just, and they don't necessar, they don't need to be in the C2, because they're residential as opposed to commercial.
Oh.
Is it, it's not Hall. High Street. High Street. There we go.
Yeah, no, Nick's Properties.
Oh, Nick's Properties, okay, I was like, what?
Yeah. So, what was Seasoned House?
Got you, got you.
What was Seasoned House? And then, the building next to it.
I guess my question is, when we're talking about the depot and the chamber, are they currently zoned C2 in that area? Is that? That was the example that was used, and if it's just a matter of synchronizing up both maps to include that area, is that? If, if they're already zoned C2, then that wouldn't be changing anything, correct?
Well, that's what we're trying to figure out. I mean, if you just want us to create another map, the map, just somebody else's map, we can create a new map, but we're trying to decide that, so is this a downtown district? You're trying to expand the downtown district, and therefore, it should go under the same zoning? Or is it just, we have a map and somebody else has a map, and people are confused? We're-
Well, I can see that. It would depend on which source they, I mean, I, I can see the, the validity of that, but I, yeah, I'm not sure.
Or should we be asking them to bring their map into alignment with ours?
Yeah, Nathan, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I think I'm a little confused exactly what, I mean, we're going to be adjusting it to the downtown, and what exactly, I mean, does that mean we're going to be adjusting our other maps to other? I, I'm, I'm kind of confused about what that, because when we were talking about central business district, that was pretty specific, and that was driven by the city, which drove goal-setting towards that, and now it seems almost reverse. So, I'm trying to understand exactly what's the, what's the case.
I, I think our downtown current zone for a downtown area was created as an older creation, been there longer. The downtown association, when they formed, it's, it's a newer formation. So, there might, it, it's probably reflective of changes in where businesses are reflected within that area.
So, do, then do we fluctuate when businesses go and come?
I think the more-
I, I think for me, for there's consistency, whether it's, whether it's we adjust to them or they adjust to us, it'd just be nice for there to be a consistency, because there's, there's definitely confusion among landowners and building owners and, and businesses. Am I in the downtown or am I not in the downtown? And what's the, what's the term for the downtown? And it, and, and then you get in the question of, is there a need for an overlay of something different for the downtown area versus the rest of our commercial areas?
Right, because when you're talking about Grand Avenue, I mean, you, like Nathan said, if businesses keep changing or growing, especially north of the Chamber, going toward the new Rose Hours, I mean, that would be exp, so I think it's important to have a central business district and/or slash downtown district that delineates our downtown. And so, the, the question would be, what are, are we redrawing those boundaries or not? Is that correct? To include things like the, the historical society.
Go ahead, Pat.
When we did the BDS study, didn't they actually identify the central business district and the, the boundaries of that? So, is that what we're talking about? Or is that what we need? Or do we need to look at that and ex, expand that? Because I, that was very specific, going like from one corner being the Gladish down to where Rooston, the Foundry is. And I think it incorporated then that everything in between.
So, what I think I'm hearing is that this has less to do with a zoning designation that exists right now, and it's just, when people are talking about a downtown district, they're referring to other maps other than what the city is providing, and this is, how do we get everybody using the same map?
I, I think Pat hit it on the, on the head here. What, my recollection is, is parallel to that, and I think that the, this, what are we using the term? The downtown business district is more of a social and emotional designation, and then the zoning is the legislative definition. Does that, does that get it together? Does that make any kind of sense?
I understand what you're saying. I'm still trying to figure out what we're supposed to do on this to be successful.
Does the map, which does the map represent currently? Both?
I don't know with the current map. Well, maps always need to be redrawn, because they're out of date the minute you, you finish them. But I think, especially in terms of, of what BDS identified for us, that that is sort of our downtown, again, that's the social and emotional map, and that's, can be used in its context. And then, of course, the zoning is the legal context. So, if we include, let's say, for example, Gladish, should someone choose to build something in a, in a, it, that's not appropriate for C2, we can make it clear, well, that's not in the C2, but it is in our downtown designated area of, yeah.
Okay. That makes perfect sense. So, I think what we'll do going forward is take the BDS map and start working with our partners and ask them to start adopting it. Got it? Perfect. Okay. Thank you. Actually, got it? Got it? All right. Next item, regulating downtown drive-through businesses. Ordinance 2227 was passed by the City Council on December 13th, so this is complete. City ordinance for downtown storefront facade. Was hoping to be a little farther along on this, so as long as we'll be working with the downtown association on the maps, I'd like to be able to bring this up with their new executive director, who will be here at the next council meeting on the 28th of February as well, so we can have some discussion before that and see where that leads. Before we start regulating what everybody's business looks like, maybe we take a softer approach with the downtown association and let them have some input on their own, is our thought up here, and I can certainly use some extra direction on that if that's not what the intent is.
I think that is exactly what we, I was envisioning, to facilitate that partnership in a positive way.
Perfect. Okay. City ordinance on empty buildings. The council discussion occurred on this in September. City attorney has been in contact with both Auburn and Everett. Those were the preferred choices of council when some research was done as to what they were doing. Community development director is expected to return to City Council in March of '23 with a presentation on this. So, we're making really good progress on this one. Disposition of 325 South Paradise property, commonly known as Old City Hall. The Police Department, the Detectives Division now occupies part of the second floor. The Maintenance and Operations Business Division are planning to move from Guy Street to the other end of the second floor here at the beginning of the second quarter. Whitman County District Court contract runs through the end of 2024, so we do have that space already set up for them. But also, the Police Department Facility Needs Study that was part of the last CIP has been completed, and they expect to return in front of the City Council April 11th, according to the current schedule, and give you an update on what this building can possibly mean to them more fully. So, there'll be more on this as the second quarter starts. And that brings us to the end of downtown and into boards and commissions. So, the first item on that was to develop a board and commission handbook, which includes consistent descriptions of requirements, duties, responsibilities, and terms. I just saw the last draft of that yesterday, so it is getting adjusted again, and what we're looking to do is get that in front of a couple set of fresh eyes. It hasn't seen this, and it's not lost in the depth, and see if there's anything that we missed, but the distribution to the boards and commissions on this is expected within the next thirty days. Review and update the public art process. This is one of the few red items that I still have on the memo sheets that I send out, meaning the progress has not been made on it. So, we're actually holding off on this until the Arts Commission piece, which is right now. So, work with the community partners to restore the Arts Commission. We are currently recruiting for the Arts Commission members and to help guide the discussion with the community partners, as well as develop any of the changes that we need to the public art process, as was mentioned before. So, if people are out there looking to get involved, this is a, a very big need for us right now. There's still a couple other groups that we're looking for, but the Arts Commission would really like some applicants. And that brings us to enhanced communications. So, the first item on that was to harmonize the city website. The RFP for the new website that City Council approved in the last CIP, as well as the budget, has been posted, and proposals are actually starting to come in. So, those are due on the 10th of February. We will be sorting through those and trying to find a vendor for delivery. Expect to have that done by the end of the month, next month, not January, that's today. Next item was to ensure early and timely notification of construction activities, parking availability, and emphasis on the 2023 downtown project. So, the first look at the draft timeline of the downtown project that we received here at council on the 10th of January. Staff is holding internal meetings to prepare options for City Council to consider, and then, once the bid documents and timelines are complete, there will be the ability to firm up some details more accurately. But we're, we're doing a lot of the like work, as I mentioned in a previous item, to be able to get this out and then just hammer on the communications piece. There's still work that Welch Comer's helping us out with on that as well. Increase public feedback, coffee with the council members. City Council held the town hall sessions first week of October of 2022, and I will be returning to the City Council on the 14th of March for a debrief on those. We were gonna do that earlier, or later in the year last year, but the agenda's got very busy, and council wanted a little extra time to think about things, so I just wanted to give you guys a heads up. The agenda, the next meeting, the 28th, is getting pretty full, but there seems to be a lot of room on the meeting for the 14th of March, so I've kind of penciled that in. Improve closed captions for a City Council meeting. This was completed on June 14th with the help of the IT department. Promote community volunteering and purpose of the commissions and committees, positive impact of volunteering, and ways to get involved. We're receiving a lot of increased interest for open committee and commission board seats, so thank you very much for everybody that's been shaking the trees on that. We have more applicants and positions available on the Sustainability Committee. The mayor's working through those and plans to make those appointments shortly when he returns to town. So, we, we keep filling these boards and committees. We're still struggling with a position on civil service, so I'll make a plug for that as well. If you go to our website and look at the boards and commissions, you can see what's involved in that. Review and update the code of conduct for staff and elected and appointed officials. There was a previous version on file that's being updated through the city clerk's office and making good progress towards maybe having that tied up for a draft by the end of the week. I'd like to get that once we get through some of the language items again, just like with the other item in front of some fresh eyes, and then hopefully distribute that to elected officials and appointed officials before the end of February. Okay. So, the next piece was support collaboration and education, and the first item has emphasized the importance of collaborating with community entities, including but not limited to Pullman Regional Hospital, including the Blue Zones, Pullman School District, Washington State University, Switzer Engineering, and all the others. So, staff continues to see success through our interactions with these groups, whether it's at a planning level or something like working on the HVAC system with the school district. So, the collaboration does remain ongoing with city staff, and as additional opportunities present themselves, we, we are getting very involved. Projects of mutual interest remain topics of conversation and discussion.
Nathan has a comment?
Sure.
Thank you, Eileen. I, I just want to clarify, the, the Blue Zones is not necessarily, so, so having brought it up in the goals is not necessarily something through Pullman Regional Hospital. It's something that would be done in conjunction with the hospital. So, it's not an entity here. It's Blue Zones Research in general. It's a international research. So, just want to make sure that's clear, so, because these other ones are local, so.
Okay. I'd like to sit down and discuss this with you more, and then maybe engage you on helping us on the reach-out.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Next item is have hired consultants collaborate with one another to reduce overlap on redundant work. So, we continue to monitor the current consulting list, which right now is Welch Comer, Arnett Muldro, TCF Architecture and Parametrics, and just this week, we were able to put TCF Architecture and Parametrics together on the facility study for transit. So, it was a good, good move on Clayton Forsman's part on that to be proactive. Let's see. Promote and support community efforts in the areas of, first one, homelessness. We're looking for opportunities to engage at the staff level via partners involved in the housing initiatives of this item I'm gonna get to here below. We regularly meet with community action, and we're just looking for, finding our place to fit in. Accessible healthcare, this is another one of our red marks, is something we need to pick up our speed on, is look at engaging medical providers in Pullman Regional Hospital with additional guidance from the City Council. It's, accessible healthcare is a, not just a Pullman problem, it's state and federal, so we, we want to make sure we're hitting the right tones with that and see what we can do here locally. Attainable housing, housing commission, housing trust, and low-income housing. So, this item was also included on the 2023 legislative priorities, for which council will be heading off to Action Days here in two weeks in Olympia. There's a work group that's been working on this. They presented to the mayor's roundtable in the fourth quarter of 2022, and the work group had a meeting yesterday, I believe, with the Spokane Housing Authority. I'm getting a yes, thank you. And we're completing the Department of Commerce grant item and expect to be back in front of City Council before the end of the second quarter. See what they've found in our codes that can help alleviate some of these issues as well. They've been a really great partner for us. Support future bypass, another item that made it to the 2023 legislative priorities list the council adopted on the 1st of November. There was a previously discussed study to look at a couple options for that. That's been paused by all the partners, once they determined that the funding that was kind of allocated, which really wasn't, it was kind of redirected from another project that wasn't gonna happen, that wasn't gonna be enough funding to complete what needed to be done. So, everybody is going back to the state. All the partners are going back and looking to increase the state funding for the study that we really need, and see if that comes out of this budget at the state level. And then, continue to support the Pullman Regional Airport projects. Terminal, terminal construction has commenced, and a regular dialogue between the airport and city happens multiple times a week. This item's also included in the legislative priorities, so we've worked on that, and then we've been just talking about it on the staff level, making sure that we're ready for inspections to keep the project moving along. to keep the project moving along. So the next header was economic development, and the first item on that was remain focused on assisting Pullman businesses. So the Economic Development Director has time set aside every day for these and is providing summaries of work on a quarterly basis to the City Council. Promote and support the strategic tourism plan and marketing plan and establish a name for the improvement plan. The tourism contract is expected to be in front of the City Council on the twenty-eighth of February, which is our next meeting. The branding presentation was my lead-in tonight, so we're continuing to work through that. And the marketing plan is expected to resume from the pause that it's been on at the beginning of the second quarter. So as we were doing the branding piece and bringing the tourism on, coming back into the marketing piece, and that was Golden Shovel, if I remember correctly, or was, I always get those two backwards, I have to pause. So revisiting that and those timelines. And the strategic marketing subgroup does continue to meet regularly here in the building. Develop an apprentice program through the city of Pullman. So the, myself and a couple other department directors will be meeting with the city of Moscow at the end of February. The University of Idaho has reached out to us and asked both cities, would we be interested in taking on an apprenticeship program through their MPA program? So we're going to meet and discuss what that might look like and maybe create a framework and see if it's mutually beneficial to everybody. So there'll be more news on that in the next check-in. And then we just continue to look for, now, before we look for additional opportunities, we do have an apprenticeship program where we do have two WSU students in our Public Works Department that come in and get some work done for us. There's lots of work for them. Talked to them today, they were going out to check some sewer lines on their way out the door, so they've been really valuable and, you know, good set of folks here, excuse me. But outside of that, we're just looking for other opportunities as they identify where we can get folks involved and do more. Just need to discuss any financial components with Council before we take any action, because now there is a expected salary component that goes along with these. It's already budgeted for the Public Works Department, but it's not through any of the Research and discuss the implementation of a transportation benefit district. Staff's prepared for putting on an open public hearing on Council's agenda for the fourteenth of March, but I could use a couple clarification points before I overdo it, and that's specifically, do you want me to put together, when we did this presentation, we spent a lot of time talking about the financial component of it as well. So I think the direction I was given previously, and I just want to reassure this before I bring the wrong thing, is establishment of the transportation benefit district first as the public hearing, and then we'll get into the finances as the days go on. Is that the general thought of the Council? I could, I saw one head nod.
Yeah, Megan, did you have a comment?
I guess I'm confused on what you're asking in terms of the...
When I presented the transportation benefit district the last time, it was not only how to establish it, how it operates, and how you can fund it. So I'm ready to come forward and put this on the March agenda for an open hearing. Would you like me to bring everything forward as I've presented it, including the funding mechanisms, which include potential additions of property tax or sales tax?
Sales tax, yes.
Or do you want to just establish the district and then take the financial piece piece by piece?
Yeah, Becky?
The second one, establish the district first and then take the financial piece piece by piece, for me.
Okay. I would recommend that as well, because when I first presented it, this is how it existed, and then in last year's legislative session, some of the financial piece changed, and I've been kind of following it along this time, and things could probably change as well. I'd like to get my arms around the financial piece, but there's nothing stopping us from having the open hearing on establishing the district, if that's a good place to start.
Because that is the first step in the actual mechanics of putting this thing together.
Right.
We have to have that hearing.
Sure.
Excellent, okay, yep.
Okay. Coming at you on the fourteenth, and I've been reviewing the ordinance that was written, and there's a couple adjustments that need to be made, so we'll be ready to go on that as well, once the public hearing is completed.
Mike, can I?
Yeah, go ahead, Megan.
I wasn't quick enough to weigh in or comment about the apprentice program through the city of Pullman. Council might need to remind me, but I thought that was a broader discussion around looking at partnerships with school systems and possibly looking at specific areas where there's shortages to build up some kind of apprenticeship, particularly like around construction and a lot of these trades that we're finding difficulty in building up.
Okay, so you, based on that, do you want us to look at building an apprentice program for some of these trades that we're missing here and have the city run them?
Well, exploring that possibility, I think, is what was in my mind, as far as can the city play a role in that or facilitate that versus maybe trying to do it all by themselves, but making it a proactive approach, identifying what we have already heard time and time again, that we're lacking these folks that are trained and developed in these needed trade areas.
Okay, then I think what I'll do, if it's all right, is I'll take that thought and jump back to support and collaboration and education, where we can emphasize the importance of collaborating with our community partners, because the ones that are set up to do this could probably deliver it. I just, Spokane Falls Community College just jumped out at me.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'll take that and draw a line between the two and see if we can explore that and add to the apprentice and trade piece.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, Nathan had an additional comment?
So I know when, I had suggested this, but this has been on many other council members' minds, we thought it would be too broad to have the entire community, and from my recollection of the meeting, we were wanting to provide an example for the rest of, we can't force other businesses to do apprenticing, but we can provide an example of how we can do it in the city and then start that ball rolling. Because partnering kind of, it's, we can try it, but providing an in-store, in-house type of example for other community partners, and then being able to go to partners and say, hey, look, we're doing this, it would help the community as a whole. So that was, I think, where the vision was, we were looking at as far as goals. If we just say, let's just partner, they'll say, how do we do that? So, but I agree with you wholeheartedly, Megan, so, thank you.
Yeah, and I almost put Frances on the spot here. I thought you were at Kiwanis this last week. We heard at Kiwanis, we heard a marvelous presentation from Pullman High School about what they're doing on this. I was blown away. They have an incredible program that covers many, many areas. These are, these are course, these are actual courses that they are taking in what they call career and technical education. It is huge. They have, I think it's forty-five percent of their students are involved in one class or at least two classes, I think they said, in this area. So they are moving like lightning on this. I was just delighted to hear all of that. And it's all those things that we've talked about, kind of all pulled into one thing, and I would be delighted to see that presentation here at Council at some point. The instructor, whose name escapes me right this minute, the director of the program, she gives a dynamite eight or ten-minute example and a good PowerPoint on how this really is happening in our community, rather than us, you know, casting a net out there for a need that's already being addressed and in an outstanding way. So let's look to them for now, and, yeah, it begins at home, and they're doing a great job, yeah.
That's great to hear, and yeah, by all means, we don't need to duplicate it. I would look forward to hearing that presentation.
I made a note, and I'll see if I can get them in, and we'll reach out as well and see what they can help, because I just, as you're discussing, I remember there's a pretty strong welding program up there, too, and I wonder if there's some projects that we can send up and give them some practical work.
Absolutely, yeah, and there was culinary arts and just, yeah, a lot of stuff, a lot of good stuff.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, now we're into the other priorities, which is the last section heading, but it's a large section. So research and discuss the installation of the red light cameras in Barn Dance Walk Always Crossing. So this was presented to City Council as part of the consultant review for Project Downtown. The pedestrian count requires a higher volume to make diagonal crossings effective, along with the Washington Department of Transportation concerns of our current E-rating on grand, and when that might change into an F is certainly a concern. Police Department, Megan Parks came in and did a presentation on red light cameras, so we've, we believe we've addressed this unless there's further questions from the Council on it. Enhance the City Wellness Committee, provide annual mental health first aid training for city staff and elected and appointed officials, and encourage reciprocosity of mental health credentialing, aquatic center access at a reduced cost. So kind of working our way backwards a little bit, the aquatic center access is available at a discount to the community as well as state staff. We're working on being, figuring out a way to be able to further enhance that, especially for city staff. Reciprocosity on mental health credentialing did make it to the legislative goals for City Council when those were adopted as well. And then jumping back up to the wellness piece, now that the HR department is fully staffed, we're working on twenty-three second and third quarter events that will continue to promote wellness. We held our first Health and Wellness Fair last of November in here for city staff. It was a really, it was very successful. We're starting to plan for that again in the fourth quarter in here. City staff had the mental health training on the fifth of January, as far as this item goes, and we're trying to get boards and commissions set for 2023. We're still working on reappointing and getting these groups together so we can train them all. You guys made a really strong move tonight with all the reappointments, so we're, I'd say we're about eighty percent of the way there on committees, and that includes the yet-to-be-seeded Environmental Resiliency Committee.
Nathan has a comment?
Thank you, Eileen. Mike, so I'm interested with the mental health credentialing, was that through the National Academy? That was the eight-hour mental health?
The mental health credentialing was a discussion that we had about states recognizing other states' credentials, so we can have more mental health professionals.
The training, sorry, I meant the training for city staff. You had mentioned there was mental health first aid training?
Yes.
Done in January? Was that the eight-hour program? Is that what you were talking about?
Yes.
Okay. Now, is that going to be open for elected community? Because that was something we had discussed as well.
Sure, for the elected and the boards and commissions, which are on this item, and then the next item's the community, so I'll touch on that there. But now, as the boards and the commissions are starting to be set and we're having, we know which people to invite, we're going to start scheduling those as well.
Okay, and the other comment, and please, if you have comments regarding this, Catherine Stillwell, if I, so she's, I sent an email, she has the QPR training, which deals specifically with suicide prevention and identification of needs and so on. That's a one-hour program that she was interested in doing with the Council, because not everybody can make an eight-hour program. So I just, I believe you got the email, and that's something...
Right, and I was hoping that would come up tonight, so I can discuss this, because when this originally came up in the deal, it was very specific as to which class was wanted, and I made a point of saying, can we look at alternatives? And I was told not to. And then I received your email, so I'm back in front of the group now that it's brought up, and say, can we look at an alternative as opposed to the eight-hour class, especially for these volunteers and elected officials? Would that still meet the spirit of the goal, since when we originally set these, it was completely different?
Yeah, well, I mean, the rest of the Council can chime in. I know when I was talking about it, my mind was on the eight-hour. However, when we met with Annie Pillar's group, she had discussed this QPR, and that was after the fact, and that was the hour-long, and that is very much more specific to, I feel, the needs. So I'm going to open that up for the rest of the Council, their opinion on it.
I could tell you that I think we would have better attendance from the staff at ours if we had a shorter one as well.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, Becky, please.
And I would just like to see, I mean, it doesn't, from my viewpoint, it doesn't have to be one training or another. It would be nice to be a good training, but there might be something even more specific for volunteers as well. So I would say flexibility, that the city finds something that you, Mike, and staff, if you find something that looks like it works and you can, I know you vet things and make sure they're good, I would want to open the flexibility up to that, not just the eight-hour training or this specific one-hour training, but in general, what would work best for the volunteers and others?
Sure, and that would give us a lot of relief budgetarily as well, paying for a shorter piece, even though we're paying for more people.
Right, okay. I just wanted to comment real quick on the homelessness. I didn't say anything because I didn't want to. Back in 2022, and I know Chief Opken North is here, Officer Patterday had been working on a homeless resource guide, and I wanted to request at some time in the future if we could get an update from the police regarding current homelessness in our community, how best are we, how are we practicing, of course, approach, and then being welcome and so on and so forth, but also within those legal bounds. So I believe that's important. One last thing I think is really, really important, and this is something that I think with the legislators, maybe next session, to discuss is the point-in-time count, which determines the amount of funding, the amount of homelessness that are in the city, normally takes place during the coldest times of the year for us. I'm trying to remember if it was January or February.
It was about ten days ago, I think, yeah.
And that has been a continual issue, and that is something, I think, at the state we should really be talking to them about. It is, I'm not sure how much we can really push on it, but that is a horrible time here, around here, to be doing that type of count. So just wanted to mention that.
Isn't that designated by the state? Because I know Spokane just did it, too.
Yeah, I believe so, so I'm not sure how much we can do, but that's why it's more with the... That's why it would be more with the legislative.
And going back to the report on the state of homelessness in Pullman specifically, it would be really helpful to have an update on that, because I hear things all over the map, and I don't know whether people are speaking out of fear or misinformation or we need to let the community know where we're at and what's being done. It doesn't have to be a lengthy report, but it does have to throw that accuracy out there, because just recently I heard a couple of things that were really startling, that I'm pretty sure weren't true. So let's see if we can come up with something that gets us where we need to be, in terms of real accurate information.
As Nathan alluded to, provide a program for mental health first aid training for the community. Classes for this have been scheduled for the twenty-fifth of March and the fifteenth of April, and there are still room to sign up, there's still room available. So if you go to the web... So, if you go to the website through our Recreation Department, you can find these and sign up for them. Work to show support and value for our employees. The, as I mentioned earlier, the Health and Wellness Fair was a tremendous success at the end of last quarter. Executive Management Team continues to host internal monthly leadership development series. Wellness Committee is running a pilot program on positive engagement, both internal and externally right now. The Ameribend Salary Study for nonrepresented staff was finally completed January 19th. And the analysis is being worked through. I expect to have that done before AWC Action Days come to conclusion. Provide diversity, equity, and inclusion training for city staff and elected officials. Staff is looking to secure onsite training for the second quarter of this. There's still a few moving parts that we're trying to get our arms around. But we believe by the time the second quarter update happens, this will have been completed. Research and discuss adding full-time positions for grant writer, GIS-assisted parks professional, et cetera, as part of the upcoming budget. Staff met with the mayor and city administrator last July to review the requests. And those positions deemed most important and financially feasible were included in the mayor's proposed budget. And the budget was adopted by the city council on the 29th of November. Remove dead and compromised trees citywide and raise the tree canopy to improve grassy areas. Staff has been progressing through different city properties, a lot of emphasis on Sunnyside Park. And we've just evolved out into Cruel as well. Requests and events to fulfill this goal are, certainly, we're looking for input on that. Work just is going to remain ongoing, especially due to the recent wind events and a lot of inability to move heavy equipment onto soft ground. And I'm thinking about that tree that's split right by the riverbed there at City Playfields that we have marked off. It's just so squishy getting equipment in there. Actually, a freeze would help us because we could just drive right over the ice very carefully.
Yeah, there was some major failures to communicate, or apparently, this was my item and apparently I was not clear. We need to sort of review what we mean by raising the canopy and improving grassy areas because some work was done that I found very curious and not at all helpful. So, we need to review that and make sure we're making the right moves in, in where I was headed originally with this. So, if we can set some time aside for that, I've got some feelers out in some ways to help us clarify what we, what we need.
Okay, so is, I, I always want to be very careful and ask the rest of council, is, is there agreement on that? I just hate to get into getting one-on-ones on these and a goal going a different direction. So, if I can get a head nod from the group that.
I guess one thing I'd say is I would like to hear from arborist as, you know, staff are professionals as it relates to what is the right thing around, as it relates to tree canopy. The other piece that I'm hearing a lot as it relates to tree canopy, not in our parks, but it could apply some to our parks, is around the safety as it relates to lighting. And, and, and just the tree canopy effects on safety in pedestrian areas and pedestrian walk areas. So, it'd be, it'd be nice to hear, so that we have this plan that, where the arborist has come in and talked about it, we also will look at it from a safety perspective as we're looking at the look and feel of our parks.
Okay, as I hear that, it's, I'm, I'm generating an idea here. I should probably point out, by the way, because this has come up in several meetings. We actually have now two arborists in the city. We had Nina Ashmead pass her test this January. So, we're very happy about that. How about I, if, with the council's blessing, if I put together a small work group, Eileen, the arborists, and we can come in and talk about this, and I can come back and report to council on this particular item? Outstanding.
Yes, yes, excellent, yeah.
Okay, just sometimes I have to flush it out myself, so thank you. I need this. Clean up overgrown shrubs, bushes, and perform prompt weed control. A lot of this is going to be similar to the item that came up earlier on this. So, work continues ahead of spring of 2023. And staff is working through the approved budgeted positions to get more help on the ground. And we're actually hoping for a more favorable spring in '23 than '22, where it rained, it got sunny, and it rained, it got sunny, and the weeds grew like crazy. We've also got some additional equipment that was part of the CIP in the budget that'll help us on this as well. Create natural landscapes in the park to mitigate water usage as part of the forthcoming water conservation piece, which is going to be below. I'll touch on that a little bit more in depth. We're going to work towards a more draft, or more drought tolerant and low water consumption options with an emphasis on white scape materials. This will also be addressed more robustly in the Parks Improvement Plan, which is down here a little bit farther as well. Review active transportation in the city parks. We're creating an internal staff work group. Initial meeting set to be late in the quarter. It's probably going to be towards the end of March to get all the people involved. And then come back to council in the third quarter with some recommended code updates. Improve Sunnyside Park interests and ADA. This item was approved as part of the 2023 budget. Design work is in progress. Big concern for us is the onsite work, if it's not fully completed by the Fourth of July, considering Sunnyside Park is an integral part of the Fourth of July celebration. So, due to the timing of getting this completed, the design work completed, out to bid, and mobilizing the contractor on this, we're weighing some of the options here as whether we should start work before July or after Fourth of July and see which would be most beneficial to making sure the event goes off without any additional disruptions, considering some of the disruptions we're seeing around town on other things.
So, when that plan comes in, can we get a look at it and say, well, they figure if it's going to take X number of days, then we can do it before the Fourth, or if it's going to take Y number of days, we can do it after the Fourth? Is that the type of thing you're referring to?
Right.
Okay, cool.
Right. And even going into some of their work, Parks Department got in ahead of them, brought some of those canopies up in the parking area as well. So, some work is being done, so maybe that'll limit, will allow for the proposed contractor to get some work done quicker. Investigate the establishment of Daniel Street Park with a historical marker. I sent a little note to council about this. I'll kind of go over it, but I've received some new information in the last 24 hours. So, I assigned a library director, Dan Owens, to this last quarter because he had mentioned that he was coordinating, bringing on a new board of director onto the libraries and who is very into this type of research. So, they've actually been discussing this. And I received a very lengthy email today about kind of the history of that particular lot, the house that is gone and being gone. So, I, I guess, after reading this and then rereading the goal, I'm looking for some additional clarification here on the item because at first it was, well, what does this wall mean now that I have this information? Are we looking to replace parking at Daniel Street, turning into a park? Or are we just looking to put it on the historical register? Or are we just thinking about maybe putting a plaque of our own on it? So, I, I could use a little additional direction on this.
This was sort of my baby and my, my initial thought was to leave most of the parking and find some historic photos of what used to be there. Because the architectural details that are still there are very unique to our community. The brickwork or the rockwork there is, appears in no place else in our community or in Moscow either that I can find. The little stairway is, is very unique and historic in my, in my view. And eliminating about four or five, four parking places and putting some seating there would, so, sorry, would help that fir tree. That is a magnificent tree, and we want to preserve that tree. If we pull that concrete, that asphalt away from the tree root area, that'll help that tree. The parking is, or the asphalt is all shattered and cracked and broken anyway. So, if we remove that, regraded that just ever so slightly enough to put some furniture out there and a plaque with the historic nature of it. That was my initial dream. No big, no big expense, no alteration, you know, we'd lose maybe four parking places. The parking is absolutely necessary.
Okay, that being the case, and I agree with you, I've been driving around ever since I took a close look at that wall. I have not seen that anywhere in this region either. We'll continue working on this project, but we won't do anything with the parking until after the construction is done because I know parking is a premium down there. Okay, more on that as the days go on. We're down to our last couple items here, folks. So, develop and implement, the first thing, Parks Improvement Plan. So, staff's already begun work on the CIP process for this year. This item is scheduled to be a request for the 2024 item for a full master plan of our parks and adding in a lot of the things that I've already discussed, as well as potential future parks and how does that affect recreation and doing things in the parks and those facilities. So, this will be coming to you as part of the CIP more robustly. City Hall landscaping plan. Additional planning is in process. We're waiting to secure Fire Station Three land to establish a project budget for this because this is dollars that are not used for that acquisition could go back into original projects. And City Hall is one of those projects. More work is expected to be performed on this by the end of the year. And then the last item, the seasonal residential irrigation management program. We've kind of expanded this just a little bit because I mentioned earlier about the natural landscapes and the watering. So, as we've been working on it internally, the seasonal residential irrigation management plan also is going to affect our parks because we should, we're our biggest consumer. We should be looking at that as well. Staff's been working on it. I met with the project coordinators on this. And the city attorney today went over a draft ordinance. And this will be in front of the council at the next meeting on the 28th of February. So, the idea, just in a nutshell now, is we've been working very closely with the city of Moscow as to what they've been doing. We're trying to recruit them to come to the meeting as well. But the way that I asked to be able to present it tonight is the city of Moscow has stuff on their books. We've been working with them to bring you our recommendations with the thought that Moscow is going to come back to their council and ask them so by the end of this, we'll all be parity since we're all using the same offer. So, more on that on the 28th. And that brings me to the last slide, just a couple closing thoughts. So, from my end at first, we've, actually, if you look at this, we've accomplished a lot and we got a lot of momentum on a lot of items. Going into 2023, we're just going to keep our foot on the gas. A lot of hard work from staff, and I really appreciate a lot of that because this is where I'm going to grade myself a little bit. My effort on this in the last quarter was not up to my standards. I was tied up in budget and other staffing issues that did not give me the time I wanted on this. So, my pledge to the council is I'm, I, I have a finance director now. I have a full HR department and I'm able to dig back in on this and work harder, even while helping some folks cover for our vacant public works director position. Quick note about the Parks Department. I kind of alluded this, to this a little bit with the work at Sunnyside Park, how we're going to be bringing in an outside contractor for that. And you're going to see that in a few other places as well because their workload for 2023 is enormous, especially when you consider all the CIP projects that were approved, as well as all the parks equipment that's getting redone as part of the shift from Lawson Gardens to putting new equipment in the parks. So, you'll see a lot of outside contractors out there working on these things while staff continues to do the regular maintenance and picking up the projects that they can do. So, because we've had a history, I just wanted to put the council kind of on alert. If you see one of our subs that aren't, you know, passing muster, please call myself or call Kurt and we'll crack that whip. We don't want to get into a situation with, like what we had with one of our other people performing work in the city that the community was not pleased with. Project Downtown, hearing some concerns about what might become of this once a public works director had left. And just want to take a minute to reassure you and the community that Welch Comer continues to be an outstanding partner on this. They're helping lead us through it. Clayton Forstman is staying involved in that project from a technical engineering standpoint and providing some really good guidance. RJ Lot and myself are also getting more involved in the forefront. So, as we come to the next step in sending this out to bid, it's, it's full steam ahead. Staff, staff's got this. Hoping for favorable bids. Really concerned about that, but that's what we're hoping for on that. Economic Development, this is a significant part of the goals. So, I just wanted to touch base on that with our economic development manager leaving. We're working on a transition plan and just maintain the momentum of her goals. The position is posted, but we expect recruitment to take 12 weeks or more. So, we'll be working on various recruiting pieces and some solid transition pieces. And we'll just keep you posted on the details as they firm up. Future Communications, I just wanted to take a moment because I've really struggled with this document. And how do I really display to you what, what has turned into this? And I don't know if I'm hitting the right tone or not with my regular memos. I, I do know the font is too small. I will work out the font. But my first iteration versus my second versus the one that, my notes that I'm working off of now, which I sent to everybody, and that's what I've been doing, is, is this working? Or is there something else I should be looking at as far as a presentation goes?
I see hampy campers, but Megan, you had a comment?
Oh, I, I was just going to say, this is very helpful to me and is in line with what we asked for in terms of you coming back and giving an update. It's always hard to capture progress like this on a, on a spreadsheet, but it needs to be done. So, I'm, I'm fine with how it's progressing.
I'm an accountant. I just can't give them up. I can't give up.
Anne, you had a comment?
I would agree. I really appreciate this. And it, and one of the biggest things I appreciate about it is it shows, it reiterates to all of us, but also our community, how really, how hard you and our staff work on a daily basis in everything that you all do. I, I just love that it, that it just encompasses so much and shows people what is going on here at City Hall. And it's a lot. And we appreciate you, Mike, and all of, all of the staff for the work that you do. We really do.
Nathan?
Thank you, Eileen. Yeah, I think as opposed to how we've done goal setting and all of that in the past, this has really shown how much, you know, it just, night and day difference, in my opinion. And we can make micro changes in these meetings and clarification. And so, it's, instead of setting, you know, this big ship, we can just kind of say, okay, we need a little tweak here and a little tweak here to keep on goal. So, I really appreciate it, Mike, and staff.
Thank you for that, too, as well, because as I was writing these up, I, I thought about this presentation. And I felt it was okay to ask for some redirection on a couple of things because as RJ and I, because we were at all three of the meetings, and it's like, what do you remember? And it's like, well, maybe this isn't exactly as applicable, especially considering the hour and a half mental health thing that you brought up. It's like, yeah, let's, let's ask. So, great, thank you. So great, thank you. All right. Thank you, council. Thank you, Mayor Protemp.
Thank you, Mike. We're good. We are now at item E, public comment. Persons may comment on any agenda item that the city council will take final action upon, including this consent agenda. Do I hear, do I see, do I, can I recognize anyone for public comment? All right, seeing none, we move on to the consent agenda. Items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and can be enacted by a single motion of the city council without separate discussion. However, are there any items that the council wants out for separate discussion? Item number two, Nathan? Okay, so our consent agenda consists of items one, three through, well, yes, missed a step.
You need to request to read the consent by title only, please.
Indeed, I missed a line right there. Do I have a motion to request that the consent agenda be read by title only?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Thank you. Okay, where was I? Are there any items, item number two? So our consent agenda consists of items three through, one and three through 15. Do I have a motion to accept these as the consent agenda by title only? To be read by title only, excuse me?
Yes.
That was a yes. Okay, go ahead, Thad.
Excuse me. Item number one is a motion to dispense with the reading of the meeting minutes of January 10, 2023, and approve them as submitted. Item number three is a motion to ratify change order number one to the MNO expansion grading 2022 contract. Item number four is a motion to accept the accelerated streets resurfacing 2022 contract as complete. Item number five is a motion to approve and authorize execution of the 2023 to 2024 Fire Department Wellness Service Agreement with Pro Formance Physical Therapy LLC. Item number six is a motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered 109061 through 109104 totaling $516,716.25. Item number seven is a motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered 109105 through 109126, and replace check number 103843 with check number 109127 Item number eight is a motion to approve dispersments for electronic transfers 93, 94, 953, and 957 through 962, accounts payable checks numbered 109128 through 109145. Payroll direct deposits numbered 82269 through 82571 totaling $1,389,748.7. Item number nine is a motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered 109146 through 109227 totaling $465,921.86. Number, item 10 is a motion to approve dispersments for utility billing refund checks numbered 109228 through 109232 totaling $1,433.77. Item 11 is a motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered 109233 through 109281 totaling $1,480,62.55. Item 12 is a motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered 109282 through 109300 totaling $1,754,458.70. Item 13 is a motion to approve dispersments for electronic transfers 95, 96, 964 through 968, accounts payable checks numbered 109301 through 109309. Payroll direct deposits numbered 82572 through 82902 totaling $950,146.65. Item 14 is a motion to approve dispersments for electronic transfer 12252022 and 12312022 totaling $94,278.26. And finally, item 15 is a motion to approve a contract amendment with the Pullman Chamber of Commerce for Tourism Promotion through March 1, 2023.
All in favor of accepting these items as read by our city attorney? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? So we still have item number two.
I need to have a motion in a second to approve them as submitted, please.
Do we have a motion to approve them as submitted?
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion is passed. So we have item number two to deal with. Nathan, you wanted to bring something forward here?
Yeah, thank you. So I just wanted to make sure that Palouse One is actually one Palouse, so on the committee assignments. So just wanted to.
Thank you, I'll fix that.
Yeah.
Do we need a motion to correct the minutes? Or do we, or we want to go that far?
It's just a scripter.
Thank you, okay. So we do need to move this item as approved, as corrected, editorially corrected. All those in favor?
Go ahead, no, wait, go ahead.
Oh, move to approve?
Second.
Second. The motion has been moved and seconded and passes. Thank you. Where am I here? Okay, a motion on the regular agenda, moving to this, is ordinance number 23-3, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pullman, Whitman County, Washington, relating to stormwater. And our presenter this evening is Clayton.
Thank you, Mayor Protemp, and good evening, council. This item proposes some minor changes to Chapter 1031 of City Code. This item was prepared by Shiloh Sprouse, our stormwater program manager, and he wanted to be here tonight, but had a conflict, so I'm pinch-hitting for him. Chapter 1031 covers illicit discharge, detection, and elimination, what we commonly call IDDE. The purpose of that code section is to control the introduction of pollutants and to prohibit illicit connections to the stormwater system, which would, of course, impact surface water qualities. The city's municipal stormwater permit requires that the city review and update this section of code by February 3rd. Shiloh has reviewed that code section in detail and consulted with our program manager at DOE, Department of Ecology. And during that process, it was determined that just a few changes to the code were necessary in order to fully comply with our permit. Those changes have been incorporated into the ordinance before you tonight, and they are offered for your council review and approval. In summary, a few definitions were added, and a few other housekeeping items were made, minor edits, and that is just, again, to allow us to better align with our city's stormwater permit. And I would be glad to take any questions that you might have tonight.
Francis?
Yes, I had one just, I noticed that sidewalks were removed as a method of conveyance of stormwater, and so I was just curious, is that more of a housekeeping type thing, or is there, or is there something else going on related to that?
Yeah, that's a housekeeping thing that just relates to how we define the MS4, so the stormwater system, and so didn't feel the need to keep that in there.
Any further questions for Clayton? Do I hear a motion to adopt?
So move to adopt ordinance 23, day's three?
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Do we need to do a full reading?
Or?
Would we, would the council like to hear the ordinance read? I'm seeing nods, let's do it.
Okay. Thank you. So this is ordinance number 23-3, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pullman, Whitman County, Washington, relating to stormwater, amending Pullman City Code sections to Title 10 Public Services and Utilities of the Pullman City Code and other matters properly related thereto.
Thank you. Item number two is Resolution R4-23, a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement between the City of Pullman and the senior, and the Pullman Senior Citizens Association. Megan?
Thank you, Mayor Protemp and council, for having me tonight. As you have in front of you the resolution and the agreement, the City of Pullman provides transportation to the Pullman Senior Citizens Association and its members for the Pullman Nutrition Program, or Senior Meals, a variety of trips, special events, and other activities that are sponsored by both the City of Pullman Parks Recreation Department and the Pullman Senior Citizens Association. The City of Pullman and the association have had this agreement in place prior to 1997. The association agrees to contribute $3,000 a year, $1,500 in payments in January and July of each year, towards the maintenance and operation of the two vans that we have. The previous agreements with the city and the association were three-year agreements, and a switch was made this year to two-year agreements to follow the city's two-year budget cycle. There is no change in the agreement from previous years, and there has been no increase in the fees. The Pullman Senior Citizens Association Board of Directors met on Monday, January 9th, 2023, and has approved this agreement. This concludes my presentation on this resolution. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Megan Vining? For clarity, we have a Megan Vining presenting here tonight. Any questions for Megan? Seeing none, do I hear a motion?
Move to adopt Resolution Number R-4-23.
It's been moved and seconded. Do I, all in favor, say aye? I'm stumbling here.
Aye.
Okay, and all those opposed? And Thad, would you read the resolution?
Yes, thank you. It's Resolution R-4-23, a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement between the City of Pullman and the Pullman Senior Citizens Association for the purpose of providing transportation for the Pullman Nutrition Program and city-sponsored trips and special events.
Thank you, and we are going to retain Megan here for Resolution Number R-5-23, a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement between the City of Pullman and Council on Aging and Human Services for the purposes of providing a nutrition program for senior citizens. Megan?
Thank you for having me again. As you can see as well, attached resolution and agreement, the City of Pullman and the Council on Aging and Human Services has an agreement for the purpose of providing nutrition meals and participation in the nutrition program. The council utilizes the kitchen and senior center lounge area in the City of Pullman Recreation Center every Tuesday and Friday from approximately 7:00 AM to 2:30 PM for the purposes of participation in the nutrition program. The city provides van transportation for nutrition program participants who need such services to and from the senior center on Tuesdays and Fridays. The Council on Aging agrees to pay the city $20 a day for the use of the facilities and maintenance, and the city invoices the council three times annually for use in January, May, and September. As like the last resolution, previous agreements with the Council on Aging and Human Services were three-year agreements and were switched this year to be two-year to follow the city's budget cycle. As the last one as well, there's been no changes from previous agreements and no increase in fees at this time, and the Council on Aging and Human Services Director has reviewed this agreement and is in favor of continuing the proposed agreement as well.
Any questions? Any questions for Megan on this resolution? Francis, go ahead.
Just a comment that I, I really appreciate this type of agreement that we have, because the service that they provide is something that they're able to, in a cost-effective way, provide this for our seniors that otherwise many of them wouldn't be able to get the hot meal. So it's, I work with the Council on Aging with Meals on Wheels for those that are homebound, and those are ones that at least can get out of their home and get here, and so I definitely appreciate that they do, and we have this agreement.
Thank you. Anything else?
Do I hear a motion?
Move to adopt Resolution R5-23.
Second.
I think I'll try to do this in the proper order here now. Thad, could you read the resolution?
Yes, thank you. It's Resolution R-5-23, a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement between the City of Pullman and the Council on Aging and Human Services for the purposes, purpose of providing a nutrition program for senior citizens.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Okay, I do believe that concludes, is there any new business to come before the council this evening? Seeing none, we close the section for new business, and do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second? All those in favor of adjourn, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, we are concluded.
Thank you.